In the state of Texas, mind you, there's a thousand. So we've got a ways to go, but everything we do is for the betterment, for the enhancement of our children in the great state of Texas. Some of the items that were discussed pretty much have to surround around, or shall I say, around the issues, the funding. We talked about special ed and a variety of different things that are very pertinent to us in our work that we do for the school board. And towards the end, well, not towards the end, on Saturday evening, we had the installation of new officers. Yours truly, maintain the position of secretary, which I'm very happy to be part of, but we now have a new slate of officers and some great, great minds coming up through the ranks. And lastly, and not least, is we had one of the, a group that has performed for us before. The individual is Roger Velazquez, and he's got quite a group. And fortunately, this year, he was, that group was awarded the Latin Grammy Award, which was a real thrill. Great musicians. And that pretty much concludes my report.
Thank you. The order of the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion and a second on the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the five items on the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
We have a second by Mr. Kudere, and that is approved five to zero. Moving on to the policy action items. During the Monday workshop, policy action item number five, Policy CQ Local Technology Resources, was pulled off this agenda for a future date. Are there any other policy items you'd like to pull for a separate motion or a future date? The order of the policy action items are approved for a single motion. So are there anybody, is anybody wanting to pull one of them? Okay. May I have an electronic motion and a second on the remaining policy agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by TASB Policy Update Number 112 to include any ISletta-specific language by administration?
I move to approve the remaining policy action items listed on this agenda as recommended by TASB Policy Update Number 112 to include any ISletta-specific language by administration.
We have a second by Mr. Kudere, and that's approved five to zero. Action item number one, Order of Cancellation of Election for Single Member District Two and Four. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to acknowledge the receipt of a certification of unopposed candidates canceled the May 4, 2019 election for District Two and District Four, and declare the unopposed candidates elected to office after the canvas of the May 2019 election of Isletta Independent School District.
We have a second by Mr. Ochoa. That's approved five to zero. Action item number two, Ratification of Award of Amendment Number 10 to YSD Contract Number 20160318 with M&amp;K Architects. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to ratify the Ward of Amendment Number 10 to YSD Contract Number 20160318 with M&amp;K Architects for the design of the baseball field at Eastwood High School in the amount of $228,000 from bond funds.
We have a second by Mr. Rosales. And that's approved five to zero. The Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 821, 83, and 84. Should any final action, decision, or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall be in open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice.
Richard Kudere, Cruz Ochoa, Mike Rosales, and myself, Connie Woodruff. We're going to talk about action item number one, possible action regarding BP-05- New Bel Air Middle School Project Agreement dated December 15, 2016 between Isleta Independent School District and Urban Associates, Inc.
Company? I'm sorry.
I don't think we've got, that was number one, we're getting to that one.
I am so sorry.
No problem, no problem. Okay, we'll move on to number two. Initial determination under Government Code 2258.052 arising from third-party complaint by Torres Consulting and Law Group alleging prevailing wage rate violation by subcontractor on the New Bel Air Middle School Project. Now you may go.
Sorry about that, okay. So as I mentioned, the complaint is essentially that some of the workers were misclassified. This allegation is based on a ratio analysis, as we briefly discussed earlier. The rebuttal comes from Funk and Company. The HR manager for the company is here this evening, I think Mr. Gonzalez has already, no, he's here as well. So if you would like to hear from them, they are here. I will tell you that these are all of the Funk and Company employee affidavits. Because they contain some privileged or confidential information, I have not copied them and disseminated them, but I'm happy to make them available to you to review quickly if you would like. Would you like to see them?
You do have an example on the handout, I gave you an example of one of the laborers' affidavit that you can see how they said they were paid as a skilled worker. I believe I also gave you an example of one of the payroll pages. And so there's more like that, but they're all essentially like that that are in issue tonight.
I'm sorry, it's Ms. Perez and Mr. Aguirre are here, if you would like to hear from them.
Let's go ahead and bring them forward, thank you.
So while they're coming up, I would like to just frame what I think the issues are from the Torres complaint. One is whether people did the work that they said they did, did common laborers do plumbing work or skilled work by the mere fact that the ratios were off, that there were lots and lots of laborers and only a few skilled workers, that's what Torres is alleging. There is also the question of the unlisted classification and whether skilled laborers, whether people who were paid as skilled laborers, what did that mean? So perhaps they can address that.
Good evening, my name is Alex Aguirre, I am owner and president of Funk and Company. And I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Rosales, do you have questions?
Very general terms, was there any violations on the wage scales?
Absolutely not, sir.
During the duration of the time that you were there involved?
Absolutely not, sir. And we have provided copies of certified payrolls, we have provided copies of check stubs, we have provided affidavits signed by our employees in which they were paid for the duty they performed. Whether they were a licensed plumber, an unlicensed plumber, whether they were a pipe layer, a backcooperator, a sheet metal mechanic, they were paid the prescribed wage rate and in most cases above the wage rate. And we provided written documentation to the district personnel.
I just have one quick question. Why is there such a different amount of wage rates for the different labor classifications? According to the complaint, there's 10 different hourly wage rates, so can you just explain that?
Because, because there's, in our case, we use either a common labor or a general labor. But the reality is that the people we hire, we like to train. And so they're never going to make it, like in this case, let's say that the wage rate for a common labor or a general labor was $8, $12, whatever it was, we don't pay any of our labors less than $15. And that's just for general labor. If you look at the prescribed labor that would apply to us, like a driller, we don't do any drilling, we don't do any mason tender, but we use a common or a general labor. But like I said, in our case, our people, we feel are not just the common labor, so we pay them above the wage rate. Most of our labors make $15 or above.
And Mr. Kudere, I don't know if you see that on the attachment that Ms. Austin provided you earlier, but a common laborer with fringes is $9.30 an hour compared to the 15 that they're paying. That's on page three.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so regarding action item number two, may I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Go ahead and push your mover.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that the board make an initial determination that a good cause does not exist to believe that a prevailing wage violation by subcontractor on the New Bel Air Middle School Project occurred as alleged by Torres Consulting and Law Group.
We have a second by Connie Woodruff. That's approved five to zero. Okay, moving on to number three. Initial determination under Government Code 2258.052 arising from third-party complaint by Torres Consulting and Law Group alleging prevailing wage rate violation by subcontractor on New Thomas Manor Elementary School Project. Do we have people here representing that group?
I don't believe we do have any, we have, Ms. Lieber has affidavits, statements from the subcontractor, Texas Plumbing. And all of those say from the workers that they were paid properly, that they were classified properly for the work that they did and that they were paid properly. This is one of those where the, again, Torres is asserting that they must have done more skilled work because of ratios, but the other thing they brought up was pipe layer. People were paid as pipe layers and Torres brought up the fact that And Torres brought up the fact that this is, the definition of pipe layers is really about external work, digging trenches in the ground. And they said, you were working inside Thomas Manor Elementary School. How could you have dug trenches in the ground and done sewer lines and things like that? I don't think they realized that we were building a whole new school from the ground up. So you all know those facts. They didn't, they're just saying it must be so. They didn't present any evidence that that was so. And when you look at the affidavits, the affidavits and the statements are, people say we were pipe layers, we did outside work, we did the kind of work that a pipe layer does.
And I apologize, Mr. Mark Martin, the president of Texas Plumbing, is here with us this evening. He filed a great written rebuttal, and so I didn't realize he was here with us this evening. But he is, if you'd like to ask him to address it.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, please come forward. I think it's nice to hear it from the person who is involved.
How y'all doing? Mark Martin, I'm the president of Texas Plumbing. This is Eddie Gonzalez. He's actually the vice president. Eddie actually oversees the whole plumbing department, though our rebuttal was a joint effort. So any questions you have, we'll be happy to answer them.
I guess we'll just ask you the same question, if you could just reaffirm what the ladies have told us here.
Yes, I mean, everything in our statement, we stand by. We feel that we classified our employees correctly and we paid them with according, accordingly to the documents set forth by the specs, which is the Davis Bacon. And we also had other stuff included in there, but it hasn't come up, but has to do with the insulators. We subcontracted that out to an insulator firm, so that's why we didn't have anybody classified as insulators. So I don't know if you have any other questions for me.
So as we mentioned earlier, the group that brought, the interested third party that brought the complaint, they never visited. They never interviewed these people. They never came to the sites. They didn't talk to the laborers. They strictly did this by analyzing paperwork. And so they didn't know that the insulators were subcontracted and wouldn't appear on the certified payroll. And all of that evidence is in, again, their affidavits, their written rebuttal, which I believe Ms. Austin has provided you a sample of, along with rebuttal.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board make an initial determination that a good cause does not exist to believe that a prevailing wage violation by subcontractor on the New Thomas Manor Elementary School Project occurred as alleged by the Torres Consulting and Law Group.
We have a second by Mr. Ochoa. And that's approved seven to zero. I'm sorry, five to zero. This is not even late yet. Sorry about that. Five to zero. Okay. Number four. Initial determination under Government Code 2258.052 arising from third-party complaint by Torres Consulting and Law Group alleging prevailing wage rate violation by subcontractor on J.M. Hank's High School Renovations Project.
Yes, on this one, I'd like to say it's the same type of issues. However, on the face of the payroll records that were provided to us, it appears that there are some payments that may be on their face incorrect for Davis Bacon. In other words, weren't sufficient. There was one worker named Umberto Flores, and I have the paperwork here, I'll just have to dig it out of my stacks. Umberto Flores, who on two different days was paid $9 instead of $9.30. And so that is a violation. And if the records are correct, and the contractors are required to keep correct records, so you have a facial violation two days during the week of October 15, 2017, and two days during the week of November 19, 2017. So there, it does look like he was supposed to be paid $9.30, and he was only paid $9. So that's a man named Umberto Flores. So if you were to find a violation, you could find it as to that person and not as to any other people. There is also a worker named Lorenzo Lerma. He was listed as a sheet metal worker, and there's an affidavit that says he's a sheet metal worker, and that he was paid the right wage, which was $27.16. But during one week in October, October 15th of 2017, two days of that week, he was paid $14. I don't know why. Because he shouldn't have been paid $14 for that time. There may be an explanation for it, but we don't have it in front of us.
That's correct. We don't have it in writing in front of us. I do have an affidavit from Mr. Umberto that was the $9 versus the $9.30. But Mr. Herrera, Pereira with Suntech is here, and we can bring him to the front, and you can ask him yourself.
Yes, please, if you don't mind, please come forward.
And then while he's approaching the podium, I can tell you that I also have affidavits for him. It doesn't look like it's much paper because I printed them front and back. But from each involved worker, we actually have an affidavit.
Hi, good evening. Juan Herrera, Vice President at Suntech Mechanical, and I can answer any other questions.
So are you the one that's also with the first worker, that there is a violation? Is this all the same?
All, yes, all of this is with Suntech.
And so you agree with that, with their findings on that?
This is the first time that I recognize that we have that difference. So we would like to have the opportunity to go back and check the records and make sure that this just wasn't a typo on the certified payroll and that the payroll records show what difference with Mr. Umberto. However, we do find that there is that difference. We have no objection to make any restitution to Mr. Umberto. It wasn't, never our intention to underpay any of the skilled employees or skilled labor on this job.
Do we have other questions?
I guess the other question I have, how long would this take?
I'm sorry?
How long would that?
Oh, it would take for us to verify? No more than three days.
Okay. Ms. Anthony, just a quick question for you. Are these the only two cases that we come across relating to this company of any errors or possible errors in pay?
Sorry?
No, I was asking Ms. Susan Anthony, our attorney. Austin, I don't know where Anthony, Susan Anthony. Good God, Ms. Austin. It is late. Ms. Austin, I am so sorry. That's why everybody's like, who's Ms. Anthony? I am so sorry, Ms. Austin. It's been a long day, Ms. Austin. I apologize, and I'm used to calling you just Susan. Is there any other errors that you came across?
Yes, so there's this, there was this one with Mr. Umberto Flores. I'm sorry, that he was paid $9 when the prevailing wage rate for a common laborer was $9.30. Other times, he was paid $10.15.
Okay.
All right? But on certain times, according to the payroll records, he was paid $9 when the minimum prevailing wage is $9.30. Then there's a Mr. Lerma, Lorenzo Lerma, who was a sheet metal worker and says he was paid, in his statement, he was paid $27.16. But on two days, he was paid $14. Do you know, have any reason, do you know why he might have been paid?
Okay, so Mr. Lerma, he's a sheet metal worker for our company, so he'll get paid that wage scale. However, there's a time period, they were doing other scopes of the job that don't involve sheet metal worker. He's assisting somebody else in plumbing. He's doing, you know, just some other small, I don't know, demolition, cleaning, anything that doesn't involve directly his work, then he does get paid his normal wage, which we hold good high wages for them. So that would be the explanation to Mr. Lorenzo Lerma.
So you'd say he was doing two different types of work?
Two different types of works, yes, and two different phases of the job, so therefore that's why we find, we find a reason why to pay them the different wages.
Then there were two other people, Cruz Salcedo and Mr. Archuleta, who, at some point, they were listed as apprentice plumbers. And they had a statement that said they were apprentice plumbers, but that sort of started later. Earlier, they were common laborers. So is that true, they were common laborers during part of the time, and then they started being apprentices?
That is correct. They started as common labor, then they were transitioned over to an apprenticeship program. They joined the program, so then thereafter, they were paid as an apprentice plumber and participated in the duties to help the plumbers and learn their trade.
So they were paid the correct wage during the different times?
Yes, they were. Yes, they were.
So it sounds like to me, based on what you just said, that we've got perhaps the four days of a violation regarding Mr. Flores at 30 cents. So, you know, there might be good cause if the board wanted to see that as good cause for a violation, and you might settle with Mr. Flores after.
It might have been a mistake we did. So yeah, definitely, when something like that happens, we do restitution checks to our employees.
So often, they will provide us with copies of the front and the back of the check versus this certified payroll report. They're two different things. So it's easily understandable that you might have a typo on the form, but the payroll check is right, which is why he's asking for three days to go pull the payroll check. If the payroll check is in fact incorrect by the 30 cents per hour, then you would make restitution.
That is correct. That is correct.
So in this case, we would just need the name of the one, the one man.
Correct, and I can give you that name.
No, I mean, but for the motion for the good cause.
Now, the other, the other way to do it is to not find good cause, and yet, Mr. Flores could appeal that. So all I'm saying is, you can't really go past today in that decision. Is that right, Mr. Salcedo?
So one moment, we have a legal question that they're investigating.
Did the administration bring their sleeping bags tonight?
Sorry, one more second, we're trying. Okay, so I have a suggestion. We are currently holding retainage on this particular project. The maximum penalty, based on the documentation we have before us now, is four days at $60 a day, $240. I would recommend that you find no good cause. We give them the three days to produce either the correct paycheck demonstrating that he was paid properly, at which point, if you find no good cause, I don't have to assess a penalty. If they find they incorrectly paid him, they pay the penalty to the district and the correct restitution to the particular employee. So that keeps, that ends your role today, and you're not delaying anything, but it still gets the right result for both the employer and the employee. But we're going to add something to your motion, so hang on, if you agree to that particular resolution.
Just a quick question. If for whatever reason it doesn't get resolved in three days, because we voted no, what would happen from there?
Then the worker would need to start the arbitration. So you may have put a burden on the worker. So if you want the burden to be on the contractor, you find good cause, they can still settle.
And they would also be responsible for any penalties?
So the penalty is paid to us, to the district. The worker only gets the 30 cents an hour for the four days.
What penalties would occur if we find good cause? Even if, we're just talking about 30 cents, but granted that there was four people that were questionable, we weren't sure, I mean, I know they were justifying why those workers got paid, but there was four people that were possibly incorrect. What, if any, penalties would? I'm just trying to figure out what's the better thing for overall for both parties?
Well, Mr. Salcedo has a suggestion.
An alternative would be to, I think you've narrowed it down to Umberto Flores of the four that were named. And so another approach would be to make an initial determination that good cause does exist to believe that there was a prevailing wage violation by the subcontractor with respect to Umberto Flores, provided however, that the good cause finding will be canceled if within three days, the contractor satisfies the administration that the $9 per hour was a typographical error and that in fact, Mr. Flores was paid correctly. And if that's established within the three days, then Mr. Flores was properly paid, there was no violation, and you cancel, the finding of good cause would be canceled. On the other hand, if it's, if he cannot establish within the three days that Mr. Flores was in fact paid correctly, then the violation is found, they have 15 days to settle, which I would be confident that they would, given the small amount, and the district retains $240 penalty, which by law, by law, you penalty, the district shall assess a penalty of $60 per worker violation, per day of violation. So if there were four days that one worker was underpaid, that's $240, and that's a mandatory penalty by law if the statute was violated.
And instead of three days, it close a business Friday because we're closed next
I'm sure they can find the $9.60 that we're talking about.
Oh, yes, I mean, currently, we're being withheld more than just retainments on this project.
My recommendation would be to find, to not find good cause and let them take care of it. We're spending a lot of time over $9.60.
So I'm going to go ahead and say, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, excuse me. I move that the board make an initial determination I move that the board make an initial determination that good cause does not exist to believe that a prevailing wage violation by subcontractor on J.M. Hank's High School Renovations Project occurred as alleged by Torres Consulting and Law Group.
I have a second by Mr. Cudere. And that's approved five to zero.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn, and good night, everyone. Enjoy your spring break next week.